Okay, folks, we're live here on the Gospel Truth broadcast and we want to welcome our guest today, Ms. Patrice Mary. And we have a few other persons that have joined us from our church, Minister Diggy Trass, and also Minister First Lady Patricia Patricia Jones is here with us today and we're just so excited to have this great opportunity to be here with you today to share more of what we began last week, last Sunday in our church sanctuary. And so we're going to first of all, tell you what the gospel truth is all about. And the gospel truth is based on a scripture that is found in the book of First Corinthians, chapter 15. And what that scripture tells us is that all brethren, I declare unto you the gospel which I preach unto you. It's also you have received and wherein you stand, by which also ye are saved. Amen. If you keep in memory what I preached unto you unless you have believed in vain. While I deliver unto you first of all, that which I also received how that Christ died for our sins according to the scriptures. And that he was buried and that he rose again the third day according to the scripture. That is in fact the gospel truth for many of us that are Christians. We believe that Jesus Christ is the son of God, that he came down through forty-two generations and served as a propitiation. Indeed, the sacrifice for all mankind, whoever would believe in him, that they would not perish, but have the right to eternal life. And so we're so grateful for the sacrifice that our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ made. As a part of our ongoing outreach ministry and our community awareness. From town to town, Servants for Christ, Baptist Church has the great opportunity to bring our citizens in to our midst who have ambition to serve the community in a great way. That is the purpose for our visit with Mrs. Patrice Mary today. We want to welcome you, Ms. Mary, and we want to talk with you a little today about some of your aspiration and your ambitions. So would you mind greeting our guests today? Ms. Mary, this is the gospel truth.
Well, thank you so very much, Pastor Jones. I am delighted to be here. I'm excited about our talk because I was excited about spending time with you all on Sunday. And I just say hello to everyone who's listening in and and if you don't know what's going on over there for Washington, I'm telling you, you gotta go see for yourself. So thank you for having me.
Well, you're welcome. And one of the things that I wanted to start off with is this broadcast is highlighting some of your some of your career achievements, the things that you have accomplished in life. And we want to know what brought you to this point where you are right now in wanting to serve the community in a broader capacity. But before we do that, we want to know a little bit about your background. Where were you born?
So I am one of three girls and I'm born and bred right here in Prince George's County. The only thing, and I'm dating myself, but when I was born, there weren't any hospitals in the county. So my parents had me at Georgetown University Hospital. And but my home has always been Prince George's County. Yes.
And so can you tell us a little bit about the schools that you attended as you were coming up in Prince George's County?
Absolutely. I started off, well, my mom was home with with us until I don't know at what age she started working, but I went to kindergarten in Beaver Heights. And after that, I went to the neighborhood school, which was Highland Park Elementary School, which still functions today. In in some call that Landover, some call that Sea Pleasant, some call it Hyattville even, I think. But it was Sea Pleasant home for for us. And so I spent my formative years in Sea Pleasant at Highland Park Elementary School. And from there, it was just about time that the county bust all of us around. I then went to Thomas Pullen Junior High School for my seventh and eighth grade years. And my mom pulled me out at that point. And I went to Catholic High School at Notre Dame Academy in Washington DC. So but most of my education was right here in Prince George's County. Until that time.
Okay, that's that's very interesting. And can you tell us a little bit about can you talk a little bit about your career, your progression in your career? You know, where you may have worked in in your life and what types of experiences that you have?
Sure. When I left home and went to Morgan State University and majored in political science. So even at that time, I was interested in politics and and you know, it was just so fascinating that I was learning about it and I could go home and see it playing out on the news. I just have always marveled at how it makes a difference in people's lives. A lot of people don't see the purpose in voting. They don't see the purpose in in supporting the bills that the the supporting or opposing the bills that that come up in in Congress or at the local level. But it's so important that we understand that it affects our everyday life. And and it's part of the reason why I'm out here so that I can just get people involved and help them to understand that every part of of our political agenda, our level is is important. Because it makes a difference. It makes a difference, for instance, and I'm going off, so just stop me if you need to.
Okay.
But if you if you look at census, for instance, a lot of people didn't want to answer the census, but that determines how much money our county and our state gets for the next ten years. So it's important.
It is a big deal. But I'd like I'd like for you to just tell us a little bit about your work experience, about the types of positions that you have held in your career. Maybe you could just name a few. Because what we're trying to do is is give the the audience here on the Gospel Truth a broader context of the types of experiences that you have had so far in in your career. Could you just name a few and talk about some of the responsibilities of the positions that you've held?
Sure. I was an intern for Congressman Steny Hoyer while I was in graduate school. And that experience was phenomenal. He was working on housing bills. He was, you know, a freshman at the time. And so between that and working with his constituents was was an absolute joy. When I graduated from University of Missouri with my masters, I came back home and and I started, I think I started working for the government, but was only there a short time when I was picked up from Senator Barbara McCoskey's office. And I ran her College Park office for her first two terms. We were located in College Park, Maryland, and then I was responsible for, initially, I was responsible for her Prince George's County constituents. Unfortunately, one of the staff members left who was responsible for Montgomery County. And I found myself for several months handling Prince George's, Montgomery and Charles County constituents. I enjoy working with people and trying to solve their issues. So I just enjoyed it. I enjoyed meeting them because everybody, the counties are very different. And the needs were very different. And so I got to, I had an opportunity to to you know, work with all different types of individuals in that position.
Okay, so are there any other positions that you held that that you would like to talk about? Or is that all you want to share with us at this point?
Well, I can keep on sharing now.
Oh, that's okay. I just wanna, I just wanna.
Yes, no. I also I left Senator McCoskey's office to become the town administrator for the town of Capitol Heights and was responsible for running the town. You know, the the town council, of course, was a part-time council. And so the day-to-day operations of the town of Capitol Heights was on my shoulder. And that was that was very interesting experience as well. I got an opportunity, I had an opportunity to work with the state while in that position. You know, there were things that were going on in the town of Capitol Heights that had been left like the sidewalks on state-run roads were crumbling and the kids were standing out there catching the bus in the morning with the wires sticking up from the concrete. And I went to testify in front of the General Assembly and and asked them to come and and fix this. And and they did. So those experiences were good. You know, I worked with the budget and and all of the departments we had there. Additionally, I served as the chief of staff for one of the county council members in the seventh district. And that was rewarding as well. That was a going home of sorts because my hometown was in that district. And there was one other experience that I was thinking about.
I think that I think that you have pretty much covered much of the questions that some of some of the persons in the community would like to know. Because you are seeking a very important position in the Prince George's County. And what is that position that that you are seeking? And why are you seeking that position?
So I'm seeking the position of county council member for District Four. District Four covers parts of Upper Marlboro, Bowie, and Greenbelt and Glendale. And I'm just excited to to be serving more of the community than I have been serving. I was HOA president in my community for over ten years. And in that position, as well as just as a regular citizen, I was out in the streets, working with our elected officials to to make changes to things that mean something to the everyday person. You know, every bill that they pass is not something that affects all of us. But when you hit a pothole, something as small as a pothole, these people just want their pothole fixed. And you know, I went after it. I went after those in the state to fix potholes and change light sequencing and 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 put roundabouts in in the community where speeding was going on. So I am seeking this position so that I have a broader reach, that I can reach others and help other communities to make everyday life comfortable, to make the quality of life livable for those in our communities.
But what I wanted to ask you, and in that light, candidate Murray, is about some of the most critical and serious issues that you have been able to identify in county council District Four. What are some of the critical issues that you see now currently?
Sure, I have been knocking on doors during this journey and talking to people because that is what I want to, I want to know what the constituents want and need. I know what I want and need. And some of them include smarter development. We have development going on, especially in the southern part of this district that is just springing up everywhere. And it appears that no consideration was given to the residents that live and will be affected by the development that's that's going up. We need to make sure that our infrastructure is is in place and can handle the development that is coming up. We need to make sure that things are included in the developments that will enhance the community and not just take away from it. And and so these are some of the things. What I've been hearing is I've been going through and talking to neighbors and friends is that they want to see a cleaner county. Everywhere you go, there's trash. That's a simple thing. That's just holding our departments accountable for the jobs that they're paid to do. And and so we just, you know, just get out and clean. Some of us get out there and do it on a regular basis. But we need, we need it done regularly. We need our our grass mowed in the medians regularly. You know, you can look at other counties, surrounding counties even. And and it doesn't look like that. So just small things that that make people have pride in where they live. Other things that that are concerned are the Climate Action Plan. Many residents weren't even aware that the county even had a climate action plan. And we need to be enforcing that. When when these folks come in to develop and want to cut down a whole several acres of trees, that affects our health. And we need to make sure that they uphold the laws and policies and regulations that we put in place to make sure that the quality of life our residents have are are good, good quality. I could go on, so.
Okay, well, essentially, are there any concerns about the about District Four, about health or crime? Is there anything being being said about police protection? Carjacking?
Yes.
Types of, what type of representation does the district have now? And how will you make it better for the residents of District Four?
So I'm glad you asked that because crime comes up time and time again when I'm talking to the residents as I'm going through. And what I plan to introduce is a policy that says, when you are developing, you have to keep up the changes and improvements and infrastructure, including the number of police officers and staff and the number of firefighters and staff. As you increase our numbers of residents, we should have a parallel increase in those who protect us. They're already stretched. We need to make sure that they have enough personnel onboard so that they can protect us. So you know, as as far as crime goes, that that will be a policy that I will certainly introduce when I am elected.
I wanted to ask about carjacking. There's an increase in carjacking and also armed robbery, not only in Prince George's County, but also in the District of Columbia, the number of murders is significantly rising. I'm interested to know, have you considered any type of regional partnership as a member of the council? Should you assent at that office to cooperate with other council members in the district and Virginia? And do you have any plans to do so?
You know, that that is certainly something that we we probably should have looked at years ago. And I know that from time to time, when there have been dirt bike issues and they go from one jurisdiction to another, that they try to work together. But we do need to have something on the books that that solidifies our our working together so that if somebody is is robbing and stealing in Prince George's County and they run back over to the District of Columbia, we can go get them. You know, it's just, it's as simple as that. We need to be working together because there are no barriers between us and Washington. There are no barriers between us and Virginia. And so we need to be able to apprehend these people who are causing havoc in our communities and vice versa.
Well, you know, we we noticed recently from the county executive that one of the federal government agencies, the Department of the Treasury is planning to relocate the Bureau of Engraving and Printing into Prince George's County, almost a $2.8 billion project. I may have the number a little messed up, but nevertheless, that will bring more jobs into Prince George's County. What are your plans to bring economic development working with the council members to assure that District Six, I mean, I'm sorry, District Four will benefit from a rising economic development?
Well, first, let me say this about the the BARK development that is coming in in Beltsville. I'm saddened that the the final piece of green space that is as large as it is between here and New York is 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 going to be traded in for for this development. My understanding is that the county was trying to bring in some of these federal agencies. And the idea was to put them near metro so that people would have a way to get back and forth to work. And unfortunately, out in the middle of the Beltsville Agricultural Center, there is no no transportation. It's a two-lane road. I wish that they could have thought about placing that somewhere where there was land already available and metro access already available. But one of the things that I plan to do in working with the the council is is to make sure that we have our small and minority businesses set up so that they can bring their businesses into the county. There are so many areas that are food deserts and and who don't have access to quality retail that we need to make sure that we give them incentives rather than you know, organizations that are multimillion-dollar organizations who can finance things on their own. So I will definitely be working with our small and minority businesses to make sure that they know all of the programs that are available to them so that they can indeed be a success in our county. Because when they are a success, we are its success.
Well, one of the things that comes comes into view is leadership as as the representative of county council District Four. Leadership will be required to get through your major proposals for legislation. How do you intend to exert your leadership style in a collegial manner in working with the other council members?
So you know, I may have mentioned to you that I am not the the choice of the powers here in in our area. But that doesn't matter to me because I can work with everyone. I have throughout my career and in life worked with people. It's just a part of who I am and and who I serve, quite frankly. I know how to to get along with people and to work with them so that we can get things done. You know, I don't believe that it's necessary to belabor making things work by continually meeting about something that you've already met about. I think we need to to make an agenda and set it in place and work through it. And I I'm a leader and I don't mind guiding the council in this way at all.
Okay, I wanted to know, is, can you talk a little bit about how all of your experience in your previous positions will come to bear in having discussions with some of the constituents and some of the business leaders?
So one of the, one of the experiences that I did not mention was my experience at the National Archives and Records Administration. And my experience there, I was responsible for our international guests. So archivists from around the world would contact me to come to the National Archives. And I was able to communicate their needs on our side and and make sure that they met who they needed to meet with and and learn what they needed to learn from us. So I am used to putting together platforms so that people can get what they need out of an experience. And I intend to continue to go through the community, have regular listening sessions with our community so that I I know what their concerns are, what is changing? What what is working and what is not working? I'm used to working with people in that way and I will continue to do it. These people that I've met along the way, I'm not going away. They have, they have already been asking me for, to take care of issues. And you know, without without having a title, I'm still working for them even before election because they have a real need. You know, I visited a area this past weekend and right there off of Governor Bridge Road. And the neighborhood is is being inundated by these folks who are coming right where the road has been closed. And they're going there for all all manner of things. And they want that taken care of. So I reached out to the State Highway Administration. It's just things to make quality of life better for our citizens. And I'll be doing that with the council as I have them understand what is necessary to keep those who put us in office happy.
Well, I was just going to ask a few more questions and then I've asked several of the members of our church to present a couple of questions that have come from our church members. And they will have those questions in a moment. That would be Minister Patricia Jones and also Minister Diggy Trass as a part of our community outreach outreach efforts from other members of our church. What what I wanted to ask you is a question that many voters would sincerely would like to know. What separates you out from the other candidates that are running for county council District Four? And And what would be the reason why citizens of District County Council District Four would consider you as their choice?
Thank you for that. So I think that the main thing they should know is I'm the best candidate because I'm more experienced. I have experience on the federal level, the state level and local level of government. I've dealt with all manner of of issues and and with with budgets, with legislation, with constituents. I have, I have that experience behind me. I think that the residents of District Four should know that also because of my integrity. When they get me, they get who they see. I'm not, I don't make up for for a show. I I I am who they get. And if I say I'm going to do something, I'm going to do it. If I tell you that I'm not going to do something, then I'm not going to do it. And I'm going to be checking with the residents to see how they want me to vote and how they want me to to leave. Additionally, I I'm the most qualified because I will not take your vote for granted. There are those who you have put in office who don't finish the job you have put them there to do. When you put me in office, I'm going to be there for the duration. I'm not going to leave because I see, you know, a shiny fruit hanging that I could possibly take. If you put me in office, you you have a servant for the duration.
Thank you very much for your responses. I'm going to begin with Minister Deidre Tras of Servants for Christ Baptist Church. I have asked you to collect a few questions from members of the congregation that you might present to candidate Mrs. Patrice Murray. Do you have any questions at this time?
Thank you, Dr. Jones. I wanted to ask Mrs. Murray about her support of black businesses or small businesses. Maybe if she could speak a little about her plans, how small businesses would be supported?
Thank you, Ms. Tras. Absolutely, absolutely. You know, I I went around just last week, visiting the the small and local businesses in District Four and talking to the owners and trying to find out what their needs and concerns are. Because oftentimes, they they may need some, especially as we come out of this pandemic. A lot of people need assistance. So I definitely will be out there, making sure that our small and minority businesses have what they need so that they know what services are available to them in the county. Because the county has a number of services that are available to small and minority businesses. So I will definitely be supporting them. And and there are businesses outside of District Four that I think we we need to even look at. I was, when when I left your your church on Sunday, my daughter wanted me to stop at a at a new business that's that's in the area. And Spizzy, S.P.I.Z.Z.Y. They sell natural smoothies. Delicious. I I enjoyed it so much. So absolutely. And so definitely supporting minority businesses. And 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 that particular business is is supporting the county because they they talk about Prince George's County and being raised in Prince George's County. So yes, I I will be supporting minority businesses.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions from the congregation, Minister Tras?
I do not, sir.
Thank you. Minister Patricia Jones, do you have any questions from the congregation for Mrs. Patrice Murray, candidate for County Council District Four?
Yes, thank you so much for this interview and the privilege to ask questions. And one of the questions that was posed to me was, if elected, is District County Four? And I know, we know that you have been going around knocking on doors, you, your team, your husband. What are you hearing most that people want you to take care of once you get into office?
There are two things that I hear more than anything else, and that is crime and cleanliness. And as I as I mentioned, I am going to hold the departments accountable for cleaning up our county. Yes, we have a role to play as individuals. We need to not be dropping trash or whatever people do. But also, we have people already in place whose job it is to take care of these things and to make our part of America look beautiful. Have, so that we have some pride in in our communities. The other piece is the crime piece. And, you know, I I met a gentleman when I was walking one day and he asked me, what are you going to do about crime? He said he had been carjacked in a local shopping center. He said that the that he had also been accosted at his home. They came to his front door and said, we want that car. It wasn't even in his driveway. It was his neighbor's car. And his, his, he he just wanted to know, what can we do about crime? And we, we're going to make sure that we have enough police officers so that these people don't have an opportunity for crime, so that they're out there and seen and in the community. And and we need to give these kids something to do, because many of them don't have anything to do. They need these little jobs. People used to have jobs after school or in the summertime. We need to make sure that they have recreational things to do as well. So I will be working on those things when when I get in office.
Thank you. Just want to follow up with one more question, and then I would like to ask you to give us a summary of of your interview this evening in terms of what you're presenting. We wanted to know, since this is the Gospel Truth broadcast, how will you engage the faith community?
Oh, that that's a part of my life, so I I will definitely be engaging my faith community. And so I didn't talk about my my background in that way. The first church that that I attended was was Holland Park Baptist Church. My mom used to put us on it before she learned how to drive. She would put us on the bus and and we would go. Once she started learning how to drive, she, we then went to Florida Avenue Baptist Church, which was her home church. And it is where I spent all my formative years. My husband and I got married just short of forty years ago. It'll be forty years in in July.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, at at Florida Avenue Baptist Church. And growing up Baptist, I know that you have to have a personal relationship. And so when my daughter asked to go to her school's church, which was Catholic church, I had to take her because she had to make her own way. And luckily, it was not too far from my church, so we won a vote. And I started to listen to what she was learning because I wanted to know what she was learning. And I got in a class, and that class led me to join in the church. I didn't know that that was the process. But, you know, my husband is a Catholic. He's cradle Catholic. And after much prayer, I joined the church. And now we can, we can worship together. So I think it's important to involve all of our communities, whether it is Methodist, which I was, I was christened a Methodist. Sir, and now the Catholic Church. But, you know, I believe in Jesus Christ. And I believe that he guides me where I go. So I will be involving all of our, all of our faiths in this process because the church is the head of the community. And it's it's necessary for us to involve the church so that we make sure we keep people on the straight and narrow.
Thank you very much for your responses this evening, and and we here at the Gospel Truth wanted to, again, just say thank you for your service to the community, the work that you've done over your career and the longevity of public service. We salute you. Also, we would like to give you this great opportunity to discuss anything that we have not asked you or if there's anything that you would like to add to this conversation or anything you'd like to say. We'd like to give you that time, and your comments will be the last comments other than our closing this broadcast out. We want to thank you on behalf of Servants for Christ Baptist Church and the broader community of the Gospel Truth Special Edition. Please go ahead.
Thank you so very much. It it was certainly my pleasure to spend this time with you all this evening. I I just want to say that this journey that I'm on is not about me. And I've told my team repeatedly, this is, this is our journey. This is the District Four journey. Because I'm out here to serve the residents of District Four in Prince George's County. I just want to do the work. There are people who have concerns who may not be in a position where they want to vocalize them themselves. I've got two ears. I'm listening, and I don't mind speaking up for people. I'm ready to do the work. I'm ready to serve, and I'm not going to leave you halfway through this process, like I said, because I see something else shining out there. I'm in it for the long haul. I'm experienced. I am one of you. I'm just a regular person. Raised our kids here in the county, worked in the community, and just want to do more. And I can't wait to involve the community in the process of government again. And I thank you again for the opportunity.
Well, we thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, this concludes our broadcast of the Gospel Truth with candidate Patrice Murray for County Council District Four in Prince George's County. We pray God's blessing upon each one of you who have joined this broadcast this evening. We will see you next time on Gospel Truth Special Edition. And may God bless each of you today and now and always. I am your host, Dr. Jerry Jones, pastor of Servants for Christ Baptist Church. May God bless each of you now as we depart from this place. Amen.
Thank you.
So much. Thank you.